Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. And your participation is your consent to be rebroadcast on the Town. Full call, please.
William Povager.
Present.
Justin Croy.
Present.
Jay Monroe. Valerie Charlies.
Here.
And Dana Neer's absence.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, everybody got a chance to review the minutes of the May 22nd break room meeting? Any additions or corrections? May 22nd, break room. Mr. Chardee moves to accept the minutes as our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Monroe. All those in paper, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both hands sign, thank you. Next item is public concern, utility ordinance, or notice violation appeals. Anyone in the room for any of those? Anyone else? Oh, yes, sir.
Here, Chuck, I'm in 520 South Plymouth. I've been in town for a month and I think this summer, and I think you guys have done a great job. The town looks awesome. Appreciate all the work that goes on when I'm in the winter. And I think you guys are really taking care of our area. I have noticed a couple of things that I thought I would bring up. One of them is a recurring one, and I just wanted to reiterate the water problem, maybe Bob, this might be something for you. Water problem on Badabano. I walked down that street the morning after the heavy rain. I couldn't walk down the street. It must have been six inches of water in the middle for about 100, 120 feet. I had to walk on the sidewalk, which is fine, obviously, but the sidewalk is overgrown with bushes. So you get wet either way. Rub against the bushes or you're walking through the street. I know there are two drains, one on the north side, one on the south side of that street, right in the middle. But obviously, they're not doing it.
They have gnarled their trees. Or just a rocky bottom.
It's just, it's not effective, and it's been going on for a while. Was hoping that it would get prioritized to some sort of a docket of work. The other thing is the no parking paint. I know we have a new machine, saw it in work in action last year. There are a lot of areas that have paint from last year that weren't done correctly the year before. Is there a schedule to do repainting or to increase the painting this year?
I just ordered paint. Chad's gonna get a list of priorities for him, and we're gonna do it.
Great, thank you. And then the third thing is a notice that I have around the water treatment plant. There is a drainage pipe coming from the dunes. It's sort of buried, sort of not. And it is draining right into the wetlands. I'm thinking that's probably not appropriate. That wetlands has increased in water volume since the dunes project started. It is at a capacity that is now running over into the grass area behind the water treatment. So I just don't think any further runoff is good for that area or for the wetlands. Anybody have any comments on any of these?
Is it coming from the dunes or from the
It's coming from
oil storage?
From the dunes.
There's one walkout basement that they piped right straight over. The cell fence is in front of it, but it does go towards that direction. As soon as they get the rest of their structures put in. Don't move it to where it needs to go.
Is that for natural water drain?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone online?
There's two people online, no one's unmuted. There are two people online, no one has unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Next is public dialogue, Emerson Wells from the IU Tree Program. It is. Emerson, Emerson here?
Well, you timed it perfect.
Wait.
Hi, I'm Emerson. I'm working under Kevin this summer with the Indiana University Environmental Resilience Institute. And we are, the town of Culver is unique, and that's kind of a part of this program called the McKinnon Climate Program, which kind of has two circles of a Venn diagram, which Culver sits in the middle. There's McKinnon Climate Fellows Project, which is an initiative by the university to place students that are studying in Indiana in towns in Indiana to do sustainability or environmental work. And then there's also the resilience cohort, which it provides technical assistance to different towns in Indiana that maybe haven't done similar work before, or might not have as large of a staff or past funding to do this work. So the town of Culver received funding to be a part of the Urban Green Infrastructure Resilience Cohort, which is a fancy way of saying planting trees. And so by the end of the summer, there's gonna be 100, give or take sites for tree planting programs with a plan to plant those 100 trees as part of a volunteer-based or community-engaged project in August or in the fall.
That sounds wonderful. Anything else?
That was the spiel. I'm working closely with the tree commission. I know some folks are here today. There was an interest in mulching, spreading some information about correct mulching practices in town as people start landscaping and wanting to make things pretty for the summer. So keep an eye out for some information in the newspaper, I believe, is coming out about that and on the other regular, regular channels. But otherwise, I'm in the beach lodge, so if any of you are interested in learning more, feel free to come find me. And I'm also hosting office hours the remaining Mondays this month from 11 to 1:00 at the Culver Coffee.
Emerson, I'd like to ask you a question, and because this meeting is being recorded, and I'm certain that people are gonna be watching it. But a couple of weeks ago, there were concern over a certain type of perjury referred to as invasive species. Do you have any comment on that?
I have heard a little bit about this. I think it's important to remember like invasive versus non-native. I think, you know, as the environments are shifting, some trees that historically have done well in places are now doing well in new places. I think when thinking about where trees are and how they are managed, it's important to think about private versus public property. So people do have the right to plant what they want on their land. That specific type of tree had a pretty big moment in terms of what is the best tree to plant. So they look very pretty most interstates, if you drive along. I'm from North Carolina, you see the Bradford care all along them. And there's kind of been a new shift in moving away from that as new knowledge is, is being learned.
Thank you. Anything else on? Yes, sir, John.
This is Ken Malphier, we're the tree commission. I took Emerson around last week to various parts of the town. One of the things that we're having a problem with with the people's property owners when we're planting young trees is they're not putting the mulch down correctly, they're not taking care of the trees correctly. We spend, every year we plant 20 to 25 trees at $400 apiece. And in some cases, they die because people aren't taking care of them, they overmulch. They don't do it in the proper way. So part of our focus this year is to do a campaign, and Emerson's helping with this, with the proper information to get out to the public and educate them on how to take care of this stuff. And then we're gonna do a probably weekly or quarterly maintenance program to, you know, watering routine in effect that we haven't had in the past. So that's a little part of it. I guess there's another thing, too. There's, some people don't like you, even though we're on, talking about parkways, they don't want you messing around with their stuff. So, but in some cases, we're gonna have to change what they did, and we're gonna save the tree. So I don't know if we're gonna have a problem with that, with how people are not. Gonna try and educate them that we won't have a problem, but that may come up. So we have to address that.
Thank you, John. Under all business, I'm sorry.
Let this be an opportunity for public dialogue.
Yes.
We have someone here for Lake Fest. You got that Dennis app, new people, they will be the presentation. And it has to have.
Town manager's notes, but since we're doing it now, we should do it all at once, if that's all right with you, sir.
Whatever you want to do, Kevin.
No, we can go do it. I think doing it now, maybe. If that's okay with you, Bill. Yes. Well, you want me to lead, or you want to go first?
I'll, I'll follow your lead.
Okay, great. I have a special permit for Lake Fest, and it's kind of unique in the sense it's a festival that is every year renewed. We're familiar with the details, and I've got the signatures of all the department heads. So we are anticipating the street blockage and closures. I think we've consulted.
Yeah.
I think with the police force, I think that's probably the one pending. If I understood Wayne correctly, maybe you can comment on that. There will be alcohol served, possibly. They're looking at a beer garden, if I understood you correctly. The affected businesses have been contacted. This is probably one of the most thorough special permits I've received. Everything is crossed. The only thing we're pending on, and Wayne, maybe you could speak towards what's left in terms of the beer garden.
Still working on getting a beverage spot. Self, so kind of waiting on them till they get where they're gonna provide. There may be a possibility it may not happen.
True. So in the past, we've used some for Fall Fest or Winter Fest, we've had, most of the time, we have the same vendor. That just didn't work out with the schedule this year. So we've approached one person, yes, and then it became a no. Same thing happened in the second position. So we're looking with the last person, and if this doesn't work out, we will cancel. Just have a garden that is non-alcoholic. And we did meet today, Andrea and I met with, with these guys. And we, we talked about, you know, what our needs are security-wise, and I'm not sure. I didn't really get into the detail of the security at the point when I made that event. I wasn't, I wasn't 100% sure where we were at on that, but we're, we're all on the same page now for, for security.
So what I'm gonna ask the council to do, that, and please correct me if I'm missing something. I'm gonna ask for a conditional special permit approval. And the, the condition would be that we approve Lake Fest and authorize Wayne and Chad to come back to us with the beer garden information and their approval of that. And we'll add the beer garden. I can update as we go. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that's what we've done.
So asking for the council's approval tonight for the Lake Fest permit with the condition that our police force approved the beer garden.
Can we do this during public dialogue? Are we allowed to do that motion?
I'm not voting because I'm president of the Lake Fest community, but are we allowed to do that to the public dialogue?
Make a motion anytime you want.
That's, yeah, that wonderful. Yep, thank you for asking.
Yeah, I, I would make motion to approve the permit with your condition of bringing the beer garden back at some point or authorizing our officers to approve that separately if they just so wish.
Mr. Monroe moves to, you have a conditional approval. On second, second by Mr. Chardee. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All are you abstaining?
Say yes. Thank you, Tracy. I had the awkward pleasure of serving as Lake Fest president and being on the council, so we had to have a discussion on who's gonna come in and talk. And so just real quick, I will mention, we put a letter out. The Lake Fest is woefully behind years past in fundraising. And I'll be straightforward and to the point, fireworks are the only thing that are on, it's on the copy block. And we're gonna make a decision July 1st as to whether or not we're gonna have those, but we have plenty of money for the festival. We have, we're about $20,000 short, and that 20,000 is what the fireworks cost. So for those listening online or in the room, that's where we're at.
Thank you.
I have a question. Say we donate to the fireworks fund, and you still don't have enough, what's gonna, how are you gonna use the
So the other fund? Right now, we, we have, there's no fireworks fund. So it's donation, we're accepting donations on behalf of Lake Fest. If we don't have fireworks, since there's no fireworks fund, if you, if you want your check back, Russ, we'll, we'll sign it back to you.
No, I was just curious.
No, yeah, that's a great question, and we have a PayPal where they can send a check to our P.O. Box 132. Does that sound right? 146. It would help, thank you for asking. That's my, that's my, 132 is mine.
Chuck, if you would pass on to your committee, and Tracy and Andrea both, the tremendous amount of work that goes into that event. It's just unreal. And they, I feel like they get better and better at it every year and more organized. I really appreciate, I know how many long hours you've put in, particularly, and the rest of your volunteers. If you could pass on the appreciation.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to all business. Second, third read of ordinance 2025-005 addition appropriations. They have a motion to move on second read.
I'll make the motion to approve the appropriations ordinance second commute.
Mr. Monroe moves to approve the appropriations on second read. I'll say, I'll say. Second by Mr. Chardee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Both hands sign.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass on third read ordinance 2025, so zero to zero five.
Mr. Monroe moves to suspend the rules. Approve on third read of ordinance 2025-005. All those in favor.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just, and I don't know if this matters, but the timeframe, the calendar that was presented by Barnes and Thorber does have a third reading. This isn't for the, okay, go ahead, sorry. I'm waking up, I missed it, my bad, I'm two down. There we go.
You're on the bond.
And I will shut it from what you guys work. Thank you, thank you.
And I believe Mr. Chardee seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Both hands sign, thank you. Next item is the second and third reading of ordinance 2025-006 to amend the 2025 salary ordinance.
Question two, three on second, and suspend the rules on third, outside better.
Mr. Monroe moves to approve, moves to approve on second read and suspend the rules. To approve on third read. Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Second by Mr. Chardee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Both hands sign. Next is the second read of ordinance 2025-007. Amended bond ordinance.
Motion to approve only on second read the bond.
Mr. Monroe moves to approve on second read the bond ordinance. Second. The second by Mr. Chardee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Both hands sign, thank you. Next week, the CCMG bid opening.
Well, you have two bids, it's like, you got the Bank Shore Drive widening project. First one here is milestone contractors out of South Bend, Indiana submitting the bid. Base mount is $557,400. Second bid is from Fenton Brown Inc. out of Milford, Indiana. At about $718,815.74. You guys can review these bids to make sure they comply with your bid proposals. And you have to accept the lowest reasonable bid that is responsibly submitted.
We need, it's, make motion with the lowest bid pending the review of the engineer.
Sure.
I'll make that motion.
Handing these to town manager.
Thank you, sir.
And level up. Again, their motion, Mr. Monroe.
Yeah, the motion would be to approve the milestone bid, $557,400 pending the review and approval of the engineer and body of work.
All votes, Mr. Chardee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Both hands sign.
Reason I was, it's a tight timeline. Normally, we take it under review, next week we'll approve, but this one, you got four months to do it. Just the end of that.
Really glad you decided to come back a year later, because that's, or two years later, whatever it was, because that's
That's less.
better than we thought, right? Last summer, yeah, it was a crazy last one.
Next on the agenda is the Southwest Lake Max and Cucky Conservancy District.
Yeah, so I have presented for your consideration that would be the third amendment to the agreement between the Conservancy District and the town. What it would do is authorize adding four parcels into the district territory. This is within the 175 maximum residential lots that were contemplated when the original agreement was, was entered into, and it also would not increase the maximum daily flow capacity of 55,000 gallons a day. So happy to answer any questions. It's been approved by the district board, and John Crist is here. If you have any questions for him or for me, I'd have the answer.
Counselors, any question? How many more spaces do they have left?
I believe we have four left. I think, I think these four that we're adding here, make it 171. Just for point of reference, we are aware that there are three valuable lots remaining within the district that have not been built. We're aware of those, and we're, we're aware that when we get 175, you know, in our commitment, we'll have to talk.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, just if, if this receives your approval, then a petition is made with the courts to have a public hearing, and the, all the property owners in the district are notified of that and can, you know, show up to the hearing or file any, any responses they'd like. So it's probably gonna be a few months before that process goes through and it's finally approved.
So you're asking for four?
Yeah, so just asking for approval of this third amendment to the agreement, which would allow for four more parcels to be added.
I have a relationship with the Conservancy District that I benefit financially, so I would not
I'll make the movement to accept the amendment.
Roy moves to accept the amendment. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chardee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Both hands sign. Mr. Monroe stands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Borrower reports. Emergency services. Mike, are you online?
He's not.
He's not online, okay. Fire. All right.
Yeah, I have just, just one thing. We're doing our annual insurance through the new name, it's, oops, it wasn't my plan. It's what? Yeah, it's something like that. The new insurance company switched names on us. I was going through with our carrier. And we noticed that there wasn't a long-term care in our insurance policy for the volunteers. So I asked him to quote me that policy. And it's raised our policy $880 a year, I believe, at once. So I'd like to be able to go ahead and have that put into our insurance. And that's an annual $880 a year for a long-term disability case, somebody has part of the sentence. In that process.
You're, you're asking for long-term disability. I thought you first said long-term care, long-term disability?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a, it's a package bill that comes with three separate things in the insurance world, but they're just named different, and the total package of those things, if you get one, you get all three. And it was, I believe it was $880 or $890, I think I said. You didn't vote?
He mailed it out with the
It's probably been a week or so ago, but we haven't had a meeting, so I just wanted you to be aware of what was, what was going on with it. Think it's a great thing, never had that happen, but if it were to happen, I think it'd be great for the guys as a benefit for being hurt for it.
I'll make the motion to add the long-term disability to the insurance plan required.
Mr. Monroe moves to add the long-term disability as a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Croy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anything else, Terry?
I just want to comment on I'm gonna say the first fireworks store that we've had in Culver that I can remember ever. They have done their due diligence, they passed everything the state fire marshal's office had been to. Steve helped me out a little bit with that, and Allen Bright and State Fire Marshal's Office have been down to the inspections and process of what they are doing. So they are legal to tell fireworks, because the town doesn't have anything in an ordinance of anything that says that you cannot. Just bringing that up for maybe later on down the road, if this doesn't work well. Guys will have to have that in writing at the ordinance ahead of time. And to say that's probably gonna make a lot more fireworks in our community, which these guys, at least that's more than I do. It's just for the opening of the eyes that I'm telling mine instead of just and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Wayne?
I just gotta tell you three things. Well, we think we had the opportunity to ask for the special against people, our parking stuff last week. Another thing that's probably be coming up, so you're aware. Contacted a couple of weeks ago. Like good fireworks display fifth of July. So I'll be on that. Pack part stuff like we had before, you know, this last couple, three years. So you're kind of aware of that. And see that. It's all in.
Finished that with a look. Ken for Brandon?
Yes.
So last one.
Busy, you have mob lady. Half dozen arrests, obviously, prior to the match, why? Eighties, big time. The visual for the week that it is. But it comes through, so.
Good luck, Congressman.
Something happened.
Thank you very much.
Terry. Back, back on that, the fireworks that Wayne's talking about, the the permits have come through for the academy for the Fourth of July. And then there's a permit that came through for the Fifth of July, which is in the water. I have not received a DNR permit for that yet. But everything else is ready to be signed, and send this chat.
I think the academy is all four.
Correct.
Academy, oh, four credits. Need to say it's not big of a. The other, they were broke.
Um, I believe the chamber of Congress is vacuuming.
Yeah. We're working on security for all of it, our peers.
I don't think we have a chair.
I don't know, unless it's private donation.
I think it's an association.
Private donation that goes through a different organization. Pass that.
Yeah.
They run like.
Or a couple.
So in that one, I have not seen a D N R present, so it hasn't been approved.
Well, it sounds like we're on fireworks twice, so maybe they don't intend to make that.
Like, most people like to see things, and somebody be hanging by a stake. Specific. Let's keep my, keep my mouth closed, do you? It's about no Ontario's ordinance. You should see his trash can.
All right, Park Department, anybody speak from the Park Department?
Crystal did contact me, uh, two days ago, said she had a commitment tonight, she was coming out the table here, she says she had nothing but the council. And, uh, they're up and running for the summer, and it's looking good, they're, to their, uh, they're keeping the, the grounds, and things look good, so that's right.
Thank you.
Your own, sir.
Wow.
For me, other, most bits were very good, or about half of what we, I was expecting. They're not, you got anything for me?
Dante, you're up.
Oh, boy. That might chance to try to correct you on something that I was wrong on, but, uh, we do have one other, uh, permit tonight to approve, it is for Sunday, June twenty-second. At twelve fifteen, it's the corporate Christie possession, they're anticipating a hundred people, Saint Mary of the Lake Church. Uh, Amy DeMeyer is our well-familiarized contact there. Um, they are requesting a police car escort, um, looking at that, event parking will be at the church. Uh, possession is leaving the church, going east on College, left on Lakeview, left on Academy, left on School Street. And left on College Avenue, right, and right back at the church where they began. Um, other than that, I don't see any requests, there are medical staff attending that are parishioners, and there is no request to block anything from our streets, so ask for your approvals. Second.
Move by Mr. Rose, like, by. Mr. Coy, I'm sorry, said by Mr. Coy to approve the permit, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign.
Updates wise, um, Mike and I talked, uh, probably end of last week and Friday. He requested that we advertise for part-time paramedic, again, he is doing everything he can to minimize the overtime, he's done an excellent job for, uh, on average, and is absolutely accountable for the overtime that is put in back there. Uh, we put the advertisement out, he's hopeful, he also interviewed an advanced E M S, or E M T, excuse me. Um, and will let me know next week on that, but, uh, want to thank him for, for maintenance and that. Uh, went to the Indiana Managers Association meeting down in Carlsfield, it was nice to hear other town managers and share stories. Some of the topics were S B one, and I think we're in all pause and wait to see mode, to see what the real impact of this is, because there's a lot of question marks still remaining that aren't answered. And we're kind of speculating on its impact, but there are certain things that are clear, there will be an impact. I think we've discussed that quite a bit. Um, downtown development was a timely topic that they spoke about, uh, attended and listened to, and got to be able to share with other managers ideas. And then council communication, and something like, don't interrupt your council when they're trying to do their job, when you can't read an agenda, so that was a checkmark. Um, hey, how about those raccoons at the fair, we attained, uh, Indiana Wildlife Services, Ryan Lynetta did a great job, he was able to capture four of the offending villains. Um, five nights of capturing four raccoons, that's pretty good, pretty good hit rate. Um, we're able to relocate them in a humane way, and we have a feeling they kind of, uh, I'd like to give Russ Mason a shout out, he, I think he cracked the case, he thinks they were born in a boat and brought in. Uh, hence why they were carried up boat, and I hadn't thought of it until Russ came in one day, so thank you, Russ.
I mean it, by no.
There you go. Absolutely, I. It was me. That and Walnut, but we will leave that alone. Um, we've had some phone calls about, uh, a couple things from concerned citizens on South Main, we continue to be speaking with the Dunes about dust control down there. And trying to keep the streets wet and trying to do something. Our job is to communicate, I always make sure people know that I pass along every comment they give me directly to C M D, and Bob and I both are on the phone. And falling short of jumping into sweeper or water trucks ourselves, we've tried everything we can, we continue to do so, and we invite any invitation to call us and let us know when there's an issue, I know there is some frustration, for the most part, though, it, it, it's tapered off. Um, again, going back to what Carrie was saying, it's nice to know we have citizens watching down there and paying attention and keeping us apprised, we do appreciate it. It allows us to be, sometimes we're not paying attention quite as much, and we love it. I know Bob and I have been monitoring that wet, wet land with our, our meter stick, and we marked it, and so we have kept an eye on it, those rain events sometimes can shift it, but having more eyes is always a good thing, we really do appreciate it. Uh, phase three, uh, Slate and Jefferson Cass sidewalks, uh, look great. Uh, really thankful that we got, uh, work done, we're about, I'm not sure, we've got the north end of phase three, they're still working towards the south, got to keep golf carts off of it. It's one of the things we noted, it's curious, people looking at the trail, right? Uh, but we're working on that. Uh, had a great meeting, uh, with Mark Sullivan, uh, and Bob and Ben out of the wastewater plant. Interesting, um, he is about ready to give us two studies, actually, we're kind of looking at a comparative here. So we're looking at one that's going to be for a repair of the existing, and a price point there, but we also asked him to, to provide us, um, with some new renovations rather than replacement or repair, we're looking at maybe a new system, and looking at what that price point is. Not quite sure what it all means yet, but we're trying to get the data for you to take a look at, and we'll have some updates coming up here in a month on that. Um, really excited, we're going to have a new wastewater member out there, and, uh, Tyler Sedell is going to be joining us on Monday, young guy right out of high school, so it's kind of neat to watch and bring him in, and he seems eager to go and learn, so he's got a good guy to learn from. Uh, just as a reminder, Wayne's party, don't miss it, Jenny's at one oh four tomorrow, and then we got a public party on the twenty-fifth. And I think that's it for me, thank you.
Calcium fluoride is a dust control product you can put in the water trucks. The same product, and it seems to work really well, I'm seeing.
A lot of counties consider.
Yeah, Alaska's moving in on the solar projects, and it made a huge difference, the before and the after of it. I, Town and Country sells it, but I don't know, I'm sure there's other contractors of Marshall County that can sell it.
We've, we were at, we asked them to investigate products, maybe we'd be a little bit more forward about it.
Yeah.
Biggest problem.
It's simply inexpensive, Tim, and it would have been costly on us to do that amount.
It's not so much where they're driving, it's they're always turning dirt. Oh.
Yeah.
How to.
Stop that. The dust.
If it was just the roadways where they're driving it out, it'd be easy to fix, but today they'll move this pile over there and that pile. It's a.
Yeah.
The hard one to deal with.
I can see that, there's some huge piles of dirt out there.
But yes, it does work. Ms. Heim, your report?
Um, yes. I have a couple of invoices over twenty-five hundred dollars for your approval, Weir's International, three thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars, that's for repairs to one of the ambulances. Baker Tilly Municipal Advisor, seven thousand three sixty-two fifty, and that is for the water and sewer studies. Uh, Hack Company, eight thousand one dollar and thirteen cents for equipment for the water plant. American Signal Corporation, eight thousand six nineteen sixty-eight, that's, uh, for work done, uh, on the tornado sirens. Lock Mueller Group, nine thousand fifty dollars and fifty cents, and that is for construction section for the sidewalks and base, Lake Max, front base three. Um, A M B paving, eleven thousand four twenty, that's for the water patch that we patches for the water. From last year, and the Baliquat Brothers, uh, thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for the pure installation.
Motion to approve the plans over twenty-five hundred.
Mr. Monroe moves to approve claims over twenty-five hundred, second. Saved by Mr. Charlie, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign.
I just wanted to let every, let you all know that the fire department's, their bi-annual pay was processed, uh, last week with the, uh, regular payroll. Um, just sharing that they have fifteen roster volunteers that were paid, they went a total, uh, in the six-month period between December first and May thirty-first, they went on sixty-two total runs. And the average, um, run per firefighter was twenty-eight point two, there were a number of them that had way more than that, um, runs. Uh, and then the last year, same time average was nineteen point nine five for firefighters, so increased ten runs per person. Um, and then the average pay for them was two thousand eight thirty-eight thirty-seven, so I just wanted to share that information, um, so that you had it. Uh, the Dunes Pay App number seven has been submitted to Mark Sullivan, and he is reviewing it. Um, there's a couple of things in process, but, um, I would request that you go ahead and approve the invoice pending Mark's review, so that we don't hold them up for another, waiting another week and a half before you all meet again. Um, the pay app is for one hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred eighteen dollars eighty-six, no, it's three. Two hundred thirty-four thousand four fifty-five forty-six, I'm getting ahead of myself, the one eighty-three is what remains on the red grant. Um, so I could have a motion to approve the invoice pending Mark Sullivan's review.
So.
Move by Mr. Monroe to approve the, uh, invoice pending review by Mark Sullivan. Second by Mr. Charlie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, Wayne is wanting to get three G, G-TAC semi-rugged laptops for the cars, to update the ones that they have are, are in life. Um, they're one thousand nine hundred dollars apiece, uh, he has a quote for five thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, I would like to purchase these with funds from the Kinetive Capital Improvement Fund. Um, which is one that we don't hit very often, but there are funds available in there so that it doesn't hit the police budget. Um, I do need to do an additional appropriation hearing in July, but wanted to, um, get your approval on moving forward with that.
I may mention to approve the purchase of laptops.
Mr. Monroe moves to purchase the laptops.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Coy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wait, tell me, I get through my process before you work. Um, every year about this time, I get, uh, communication from the United States Geological Survey, um, and a contract to continue, uh, monitoring the lake, or monitoring and their, sorry. To support the lake gauge, which monitors the level of the lake, and that's a cost that's split between the town, the Culver Academies, and Lake Massacre Cave. So we're on the hook, um, each of us for one thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars sixty-six cents. Um, the contract comes here because we're the ones that end up paying it, I would just ask for approval to continue that agreement with the National Service of Surveillance.
Long as it's, maybe, yes.
It's a yearly basis, they, yeah, every year they, they do.
It'd be nice if it'd be warmer.
It's the government, and it's, you know.
It's, but.
It is what it is.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to do contract.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Charlie moves to approve of the contract, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign.
And then the last thing I have, um, we talked at the last meeting, all approved moving forward with, you know, water rates changed, uh, per ordinance. Um, I, if it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and update, and I'll get you a copy. Um, we've got a couple of other changes in addition to water rates that we want to include in the new ordinance. Um, but I would anticipate having a public hearing on July twenty-fourth, so we would introduce that at the next meeting, July twenty-fourth, and then since, in August. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Counselor choose, well.
Uh, I don't have any, just come and remind everyone of, uh, the retirement party for Wayne. Or, see if we can surprise him with anything, um, but no.
Okay.
Mr. Charlie, I'm being, Mr. Coy, nothing, here has nothing. Motion to adjourn. Move, the move on Mr. Coy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Charlie, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.